Let's call our meeting to order. Bob, are you ready? Okay. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, and welcome to our guests. I roll call all board members are present except for Al, who is excused. We do have proper notification of an open meeting. First item is new board members. First, congratulations to Al and to Craig on the reelection to the board.
And to Bob.
Thank you.
You may congratulate yourself.
And the school board also offices are due before April 23rd. We have to wait for yours until a different date. And then Al and I have ours, so.
Thank you, I'm aware of that.
And then board committee selections. Just send your preferences to Diane so we can put that together for in preparation of our board reorganization in May. Recommendation to approve the minutes of the March 14, 2018 regular board meeting.
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion second. Any questions on the minutes? Hearing not all in favor, state aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
12.
And on the stretch. Next item is resolution to approve the bill list, which is a crazy topic as well.
Make a motion to approve the bill list.
Motion, do we have a second, I guess? And a second. Any questions on the bill list? Hearing not all in favor, state aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Next is communication and comments from members of the public.
No one signed up.
No one signed up. Moving on. Superintendent's report.
Our superintendent's report starts with a real treat. We have a star forensic student, Kate Winston, here, who did so well at the state competition that she's qualified for nationals, which is really a special, rare thing. And we have our three forensics advisors here. I think Ray and Singletary was going to talk a little bit about forensics and about Kate's competition and presentation for us today.
Yes. So, thank you for inviting us to the meeting today. We just came off of our state competition where we, as a team, took eighth out of 25 Division One teams, ninth overall out of 75 teams in the state, which is very impressive, and we're very proud of our kids. We had eight students qualify for semifinals, which is the round before the finals. And then we had two groups move on to the final rounds, both in play-acting. We had a group that took third, and Kate and her partner Maria took first in play-acting, because they were the champions of the state. She is not here today to perform for play-acting, obviously, because she was doing it by herself. She qualified for nationals in a category called oratorical declamation. It is a category where ninth and 10th grade students can select a famous speech and they perform it as if it were their own. So she is going to be performing a TED Talk for you today, and this is what she will be competing with in Washington, D.C. over Memorial Day weekend.
I'm excited.
I guess I would be the best place for her performance. Right here, there, yeah. Sure, all right. I'm good. You gonna have my back, please, too?
Yeah. There it is. [laughter]
So, a few years ago, I did something really brave, or some would say really stupid. I ran for Congress. For years, I'd existed safely behind the scenes in politics as a fundraiser, as an organizer, but in my heart, I always wanted to run. The sitting Congresswoman had been in my district since 1992. She had never lost a race, and no one had really even run against her in a Democratic primary. But in my mind, this was my way to make a difference, to disrupt the status quo. The polls, however, told a very different story. My pollsters told me that I was crazy to run, that there was no way that I could win. But I ran anyway, and in 2012, I became an upstart in a New York City congressional race. I swore I was going to win. I had the endorsement from the New York Daily News, the Wall Street Journal snapped pictures of me on Election Day, and CNBC called it one of the hottest races in the country. But on Election Day, the polls were right, and I only got 19 percent of the vote. And the same papers that said I was a rising political star now said I wasted $1.3 million on 6,321 votes. Don't do the math. It was humiliating. Think of a famous CEO, a politician or leader. What makes these people successful? It's perseverance, overcoming failures, rising up, most important, bravery. I'm assuming at least two out of the three people we thought of previously were male. Obviously, there's a large gender inequality gap in American workforce. How can we teach these same traits of success to women as well? At a 2016 TED Talk, Rashma Sujani, an education activist, delivered an influential speech titled "Teach Girls Bravery, Not Perfection." By teaching girls and young women to value bravery over perfection, we can influence a new generation of women, young and old, to go after challenges by overcoming their perceived shortcomings. Teach Girls Bravery, Not Perfection, by Rashma Sujani. Now, before you get the wrong idea, this is not a talk about the importance of failure, nor is it about leaning in. I tell you the story of how I ran for Congress because I was 33 years old, and it was the first time in my entire life that I had done something that was truly brave, where I didn't worry about being perfect. And I'm not alone. So many women I talked to tell me that they gravitate towards careers and professions that they know they're going to be great in, that they know they're going to be perfect in. And it's no wonder why. Most girls are taught to avoid risk and failure. We're taught to smile pretty, play it safe, get all As. Boys, however, are taught to play rough, swing high, crawl to the top of the monkey bars, and then just jump off headfirst. And by the time they're adults, whether they're negotiating a raise or even asking someone out on a date, they're habituated to take risk after risk. They're rewarded for it. It's often said in Silicon Valley, no one even takes you seriously unless you've had two failed startups. In other words, we're raising our girls to be perfect, and we're raising our boys to be brave. Some people worry about our federal deficit, but I, I worry about our bravery deficit. Our economy, our society, we're just losing out because we're not raising our girls to be brave. The bravery deficit is why women are underrepresented in STEM, in C-suites, in boardrooms, in Congress, in pretty much everywhere you look. In the 1980s, psychologist Carol Tuck looked at how bright fifth graders handled an assignment that was too difficult for them. She found that bright girls weren't quick to give up. The higher the IQ, the more likely they were to give up. Bright boys, on the other hand, found a difficult material to be a challenge. They found it energizing. They're more likely to redouble their efforts. What's going on? Well, the fifth grade level girls routinely outperform boys in every subject, including math and science, so it's not a question of ability. The difference is in how boys and girls approach a challenge, and it doesn't just end in fifth grade. An HP report found that men will apply for a job if they meet only 60 percent of the qualifications, but women? Women will only apply if they meet 100 percent of the qualifications. 100 percent. This study is usually invoked as evidence that, well, women need a little more confidence. But I think it's evidence that women have been socialized to aspire to perfection, and they're overly cautious, even when we're being ambitious. Even when we're leaning in, that socialization of perfection has caused us to take less risks in our careers. And so those 600,000 jobs that are open right now in computing and tech, women are being left behind. And it means our society's been left behind on all the innovation and problems that women would solve if they're socialized to be brave, instead of socialized to be perfect. So in 2012, I started a company to teach girls to code. And what I found is that by teaching them to code, I'd socialized them to be brave. Coding, it's an endless process of trial and error, of trying to get the right command in the right place, with sometimes just a semicolon making the difference between success and failure. Code breaks, it falls apart, and it often takes many, many tries until that magical moment when what you're trying to build comes to life. It requires perseverance. It requires imperfection. We immediately see in our program our girls' fear of not getting it right, of not being perfect. Every girl who codes teacher tells you the same story. During the first week when the girls are first learning to code, a student will call her over and she'll say, "I don't know what code to write." The teacher will look at her screen, and she'll see a blank text editor. If she didn't know any better, she'd think that our students spent the past 20 minutes just staring at the screen. But if she presses undo a few times, she'll see that our student wrote code and then deleted it. She tried, she came close, but she didn't get it exactly right. Instead of showing the progress that she made, she'd rather show nothing at all. Perfection or bust. It turns out, our girls are really good at coding, but it's not enough just to teach them to code. My friend Lev Brie, who is professor at the University of Columbia and teaches Internet Java, tells you about his office hours with computer science students. When the guys are struggling with an assignment, they'll come in and they'll say, "Professor, there's something wrong with my code." The girls will come in and they'll say, "Professor, there's something wrong with me." We have to begin to undo the socialization of perfection, but we've got to combine it with building a sisterhood that lets girls know that they are not alone. Because trying harder is not going to fix a broken system. I can't tell you how many women tell me, I'm afraid to raise my hand, I'm afraid to ask a question because I don't want to be the only one who doesn't understand, the only one who is struggling. When we teach girls to be brave and we have a supportive network cheering them on, they will build incredible things. And I see this every day. Take, for instance, two of our high school students who built a game called Tampon Run. Yes, Tampon Run, to fight against the menstruation taboo and sexism in gaming. Or the Syrian refugee who dared show her love for her new country by building an app to help Americans get to the polls. Or this 16-year-old girl who built an algorithm to help detect whether cancer is benign or malignant, and the off chance that she can save her daddy's life because he has cancer. These are just three examples of thousands, thousands of girls who have been socialized being perfect, who have learned to keep trying, who have learned perseverance. And whether they become coders, the next Hillary Clinton, or Beyonce, they will not defer their dreams. And those dreams have never been more important for our country, for the American economy, for any economy to grow, to truly innovate. We cannot leave behind half of our population. We have to socialize our girls to be comfortable in perfection, and we've got to do it now. We cannot wait for them to learn to be brave like I did when I was 33 years old. We have to teach them in schools and early in their careers when it has the most potential to impact their lives and the lives of others. And we have to show them that they will be loved and accepted for not being perfect, but for being courageous. And so I need each of you to tell every young woman you know, your sister, your niece, your employee, your colleague, to be comfortable within perfection. Because when we teach girls to be imperfect and we help them leverage it, we will build a movement of young women who are brave and who will build a better world for themselves and for each and every one of us. Thank you.
And she's only a sophomore! [laughter] Two more years of her...
Oh, awesome.
Fantastic.
Wow.
That's great. Any questions for Kate?
How did you select your topic?
Well, I kind of went through watching a bunch of TED Talks, and a lot of them I'd get bored with after like the first two minutes, but this one, like, it kept me motivated. And what really, was really important about it is like, everyone can relate to it. I personally, I can relate to it so much throughout my entire academic career, even like I was presenting for one of our team captains, and he said that, like, it speaks to him because this is just what a sister goes through like all the time, and it's like super frustrating, so like, it's nice because everyone can like relate to it, so.
We're laughing. What's a TED Talk?
It's, um, so TED stands for Technology Entertainment and Design. It's like, they have these, it's like little conventions throughout like the U.S. or even the world, and they get like speakers there to kind of almost talk about anything. And like, the girl who presented mine, she was like a politician, she works, you know, with engineering and everything, and they like asked her to come in and talk about like how her like business and company got this far, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Didn't know that one. What are your aspirations?
Like, in life, in the future?
Yeah.
Oh, I want to be a politician. [laughter]
You got that, you know.
We'll all three.
Just as an example of the drive that Kate has also, we have a number of tournaments where students can double enter. So she not only would perform three rounds in her play-acting duo, but in each one of those rounds, as soon as she was done play-acting, she'd have to run across the school and go do this presentation in the same round, do it all over again in round two, round three, and so forth.
You have to do it that many times?
Yeah. Yeah. It's usually three rounds followed by what we call the power round or the final. So, yeah.
You must know it by that time.
What does the play-acting duo consist? How does that go? Do you get a topic, or?
We get to pick any, like, published work of like, you know, it can be like theater scripts or anything really, and we have to like, kind of interpret it to our own. My piece with my partner, it was a piece about a mother and a daughter, I played the daughter, who were like CIA agents, and they poisoned each other's coffee, and we kind of tried to kill each other. It sounds dark. It's not really, it's really nice, I think, but, um...
Really?
I mean, we die, but it's cute.
I'm having a hard time believing that, yeah.
Oh, that's nice.
Mom, are you worried?
I don't drink coffee.
If you did, I'd stop now.
Yeah, and we, we can only use two chairs and a table. We only use two chairs. We have to pantomime everything else. Like, when we're holding coffee cups, we have to be like, pretend we're holding the handle, we can't like, we have to make sure like they don't go into each other if they were like objects. So it's kind of based on, kind of like, you know, you see in our play, like facial expressions, gestures, like blocking, all stuff kind of like that, so.
Sounds neat. Yeah.
Kate, I feel like you were extremely convincing. Sitting here, I thought you were a 33-year-old politician. I mean, you're just smooth and confident, and you will do very well.
You will.
And you get to travel to Atlanta, is that correct?
D.C.
It changes every year.
Oh, does it? Because last year, I went to Atlanta.
It's in Milwaukee next year, actually.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Plane fare is going to be really cheap.
It's hot.
I think Mr. Richer actually volunteered last year to pay for the plane fare next year.
For next year, is it?
Yeah, what a guy. Take him up on it, fly him. Go to Green Bay and fly to Milwaukee.
Thank you, though.
Very nice.
You will achieve it.
So, the superintendent report, I said it started with a really major or sweet treat. Our second sweet treat. It was like, Donna Smith. It's actually, it's hard to believe that it's April already, and Donna is the first of our different areas of the district, the end-of-the-year report. So it's already time that April, May, June, July, into August, you'll be having, hearing our end-of-the-year reports, and Donna's nice enough to start out with our integrated technology services end-of-the-year wrap-up. I'm glad they didn't stay, they were talking about getting out critiquing papers. That's okay. So here is our report. We were very excited to now be able to align with our focus plan and mission with all of our teams that we've been working with. This year, I really focused on working with the tech team. So they were able to take a look at that, and as well as the mission. And you'll notice much of the text in these are going to be reflective in many of the other documents that we used to talk about our students and what we want for our students. So the ISTI standards, I always evaluate, so, and go through again, engage and thrive in a connected digital world. And we want educators who skillfully mentor and inspire our students, I believe that is also said in our mission and vision. The standards for ISTI from 2016 are identical to the state standards that they chose. Now, in this, I'm going to give this to Diane, so she can link this into your, into your documents. So the state ITL standards are linked to the top, and then there is a video, which I'm not going to play now, but what this video focuses on is the state standards, but it also talks about how we no longer talk about teaching tech, we talk about teaching with tech. So it needs to be integrated, and we need to know that that's important for our students so that they can thrive in their futures. So informing our decisions, we took the Speak Up survey in December, and really, we were slightly above the state in most of our percentiles, more so above the national numbers, as Wisconsin generally is. But we use this information to kind of work toward and see where we want to be. One area that we are very far ahead is the number of students who bring in devices. So we have 91 percent of our students out of the 2017 students who reported who bring in their own devices. Our state is 82, which also, I think, is extremely high. I think a lot of times those students may think of their phones and other devices like that, because I know a lot of schools provide. And then the national average is 59. So with that, what digital content to use? These are areas that we were higher, so when we talk about Google Apps, some national schools are much higher in the Microsoft suite, for example. We are very high in Google Apps and not very high in Microsoft. The educational games, they gave examples of Class Dojo and things like that, Kahoot. Those are things that our teachers use to motivate the students and measure where they're at during class. And then online tests and assessments, we were also much higher than the national average, slightly higher than the state average for that. Our digital learning plan, so we went back and looked throughout the year at the components and the different areas that we took a look at from the various teams. So the teaching and learning team, the IT team, the tech team, organizational development, data, and professional learning, all completed surveys as a part of the digital learning plan, and so we reflected on that information. And our tech team had a variety of staff, and also two awesome students. So if you haven't met Calvin Schall and Maddy McLeary, they're both great students, and they really contribute, and they hung in right alongside those teachers and gave some really good feedback for them. The ideas that came out of the tech team were really good and need to be flushed out from those various teams. So what they did is they kind of set the goals from the ideas that were brought about from the questionnaires and using some of that additional information from the Speak Up survey. And so their ideas are to assess student digital learning. What they thought was, we come in from all different theater schools. We all get here, and we're all at different levels. And they just want to be able to assess the levels that they're at and be able to provide the support for those students who might not have the same digital skills as others so that they can all be successful at Arrowhead. A lot of the tools we use as well are very different from the theater schools. So we want everybody to come in and be able to use those tools so that they can be successful. They also had a goal of developing policies, maintaining infrastructure, and utilizing digital learning tools and resources to fully embrace flexible, anytime, anywhere learning. So they talked about providing students with the time to work with some of the tools that they may not have time during their study halls to do, and also utilize all the tools we have. So throughout this presentation, you'll see that we provide a lot of resources and tools, and we need to use them to their fullest. The next one is create a digital learning community, including all staff, students, parents, and develop and communicate a vision for 21st century digital learning at Arrowhead. With that, they talked about doing outsourced training for parents so that they could be more involved, so making sure that they're able to use their Skyward effectively, making sure they're being able to use Canvas and log in and see what their students are working on. So when students go home, they can have a conversation, and they can also help them if needed on some of those things. And then implement an effective personal learning environment through our digital learning One of the things that came through very strongly is that they're committed to support our online platform, which is Canvas. So a lot of the discussions that we had was, we need to use this because this is a good tool for our students and for our staff, to extend the classroom, to enhance instruction, and to also offer additional help if needed on certain topics. So with that, our Canvas has been growing. Now, these are cumulative, so as our courses grow, you'll see that we have over 900 that have been built over the years that we've had Canvas. We currently have about 191 different courses that are, that are running right now during this semester. The gigabytes of storage, so it dipped down in 2017, 18. I believe that's because we cut off one of the semesters at that time, but the numbers of files went up. So the files that those reflect, we have over 100,000 files that have been uploaded to Canvas. And the media has grown exponentially throughout the years, so almost 60 gig of media, which translates to almost 800 files. So our next steps, and this was through prompting of the students, we have modules with resources, so that's what we set on this year. We wanted to be able to show parents and students the structure of the course and give them resources, again, to enhance the instruction or to offer them some help with a concept that maybe they didn't get throughout the class. Then they also have the syllabus. We put the syllabus in the website, now we're putting it in Canvas, so we're starting to funnel all of our curriculum in there. What the students really wanted next was they wanted all staff to use the calendar. And the reason being is, if you look along that side, and it's kind of small, but you can see there's a to-do list, so when they log in, they'll have a to-do list, but it's a collected to-do list from all their courses. So if all six or seven of their teachers are putting their things in the calendar, it's going to show up on there, and it's going to help them be organized. They also have coming up, so what's coming up for your assignments and things in your course, and then recent feedback. So if a teacher has assessed something, you can see, oh, they've looked at my assignment, I can go there. So this is when they log into Canvas, and as parents log into Canvas as well. So through that, we have, again, we're doing all of our summer courses in Canvas. And in Wings, we're going to go over the responsible use policy again to offer that to students. We're going to go through personalizing their work environment, so their launch path, they can personalize and add their own shortcuts there. In Canvas, they can make sure that they have their dashboard set up so that when they log in, it's the way they want it. And then also, they can personalize their Google Spaces. Also, knowing tech devices came out as really strongly. So as our students are using their own devices, the power of that is that they know their device, they know the software that's on their device, and they know how to use it. So if I give a video assignment, you should know how to create a video on your computer. It's not standardized. I'm not helping everybody use one program. Macs may have a program, and PCs may have a different program, so that's important for them to know. And then also passwords. We spend a lot of time redoing passwords, and as you know, in your own lives, you spend a lot of time looking up passwords. So helping our students manage their passwords safely and effectively so that they don't have to have everything reset, as we saw this week, as people came out of spring break and had new computers, and suddenly their password wasn't on there anymore, so we had multiple password resets. And data privacy and security. As phishing schemes go up, we need to make sure that our students are aware that if they're not expecting an email and they're not understanding that they ordered a package, they shouldn't be clicking on those things, and they certainly shouldn't be entering any important information into a site that they're not familiar with. Staff support as well. Staff support as well. So we've been supporting Canvas through ongoing PCT sessions. We just sent out, our tech integrators just sent out spring tips. And then this summer, we're going to have two different sessions going in the whole child summer PD. We're going to use technology to bring students more fully into their education. So that's going to be our theme for the final day. The beginner sessions, the tech integrators will run. And then our advanced sessions for Canvas, we're actually going to bring a Canvas trainer in to do those. And that's exciting for tech integrators who are kind of at the top of their game. And then we also have many other staff who are very advanced and just need some extra questions answered. So our summer online training, this is probably the third year we've done complete summer online training for our staff. So this is our mandatory training. They can do it when they want to over summer and they just need to complete it usually by around October 1st. We have been including digital privacy for students, so understanding student privacy, mandatory recording bloodborne pathogens, and the EpiPen training. And now we're going to add security and phishing to that as well so that our staff are aware of those issues. Our tech integrators have been busy. This is a, this is a spreadsheet of many years, so since 2013, 14. But you can see over the past two years, 2016, 17, 17 to 18, they've really been focusing on Canvas. So making sure that our staff are comfortable with that and working with the staff on that. That's not all they work on. So this semester, some of the most recent things, they went over GeoGebra, which is a Google extension with the math classes, Socratic Seminar, which is a discussion in English. They did girls' social media and then a separate boys' social media with those health classes, My Maps, research with the English classes at South, and then Google Forms with Lori Barbie's classes. We have a lot of resources, like I hinted at before, we have 21 databases that we currently have for our staff and students and they are all used really well. Even the smaller ones that you see on here, Access Science, CQ Weekly, the ones that aren't extended lines, those are going to have about, about 200 hits on them. And if somebody checked out a book 200 times from the library in a year, I would be jumping up and down. So this is really great that they're using these. The top five databases out of there, Badger Link, we are often called on by Badger Link because we have the most hits in the state. So we had 2,570 this year already. America's Historical Newspapers, 2,145. SERC Decades, 1974. BioReference Bank, 1610. And SERC Researcher, 1433. So you can tell from these particular databases that they're doing really good research in these classes and we're directing them to good sites. Our book checkouts are strong. You can tell right before spring break when people are checking out more books. So, so that's still going strong. And our staff really promotes reading through their fun book displays, so, which change, I swear, every other week. They're already like cutting out stuff.
That rainbow one was awesome. I love that.
The rainbow one, isn't that cool?
Yeah, that one stood out.
That, that took a lot. I liked the snowman back in winter. That was cute.
Okay, we want pictures of everyone.
And the kids really love them too. They also have displays of staff and what books they enjoy reading, which the kids really like. And one of the things that they want to do that our tech integrators are going to do next year is they're going to focus on putting, you can put little hearts on the, on the outside of the book. And then on the inside of the book, you put a little sticker and whatever teacher recommends it, they can write a little note in it. So as you're looking through the shelves, if you see a heart, you can be like, which teacher likes this book? And kind of take a look. As you can see, our students mostly bring their own laptops by the stickers, although we have had some students stick ours as well. But the monthly laptop checkout still can be fairly strong. You'll notice this one goes up, this chart goes up to 250 checkouts. That's per month. There's a sharp increase in February and March, which corresponds with our, our filtering system. So as students were not able to get that working, then they, they ended up coming to the library. And they generally don't check out laptops as often as they check out Chromebooks. But as the Chromebooks were capping out, then, then they're left with the laptops. So that was kind of the, the second choice. But as you can see here, we were getting over 1,500 checkouts in March for Chromebooks per month. So it is coming down. As we get students in, we ask them, like, what's happening? You haven't checked out a Chromebook before. What's going on? And then we can kind of troubleshoot with them. And there hasn't been one we haven't been able to fix yet either. So it's always, you know, oh yeah, I downloaded it. And then we go through the directions with them and they're, they may have missed stuff. The teacher laptop checkout as well, so our staff checkout, checks out teacher laptops to our substitute teachers when needed. So that keeps them fairly busy as well in the morning. Our upcoming projects, so keeping up our network, making sure everything runs smoothly. We have our new filtering system, the challenges and training. We're planning on getting all the freshmen set up in Wings and new students set up in their new student sessions. So making sure we get everybody off to a good start with that. Updating our wiring closets, we have seven more wiring closets to update. So that's installing new wiring, making sure everything's working fast, as fast as we can get it to work. So increasing that. We have Windows 10 updates. That's our big update this summer. So we'll have to collect all the laptops and then do the configuration and hand it out. Not the Chromebooks though, so you can keep those. And then our new internet service, this is going to save quite a bit of money for us. We're switching to WISNET over BadgerNet. So BadgerNet is kind of like the framework that gets us here. And then WISNET is going to be the internet service provider. It's a state-based service, so we get teach money for it as well as E-rate money. And we'll be switching over, we'll keep the same amount of bandwidth, but we will have to change some configuration. So we're already working on that. We already have most of the equipment in. The switch over will happen July 1st of this year. We have additional laptops as we increase our programs. So we will be setting up those. And then there are continued changes to state data reporting that we are working on right now. So those are some of the things for this summer. That's all I got. Any questions?
How do you do all this, Donna?
Donna and students hit the arrowhead. I mean, there's a lot to learn, I mean, as far as accessing all this stuff. Do they have other courses that they can attend this summer or is it a school year to get used to Canvas and the Google Docs and all that kind of stuff?
Right. Well, and that's what our group is talking about because some kids come in, they're already used to using Google Docs. They may have used some of the other, at least Skyward services. And then other students have to learn everything from the start. So we're working on our, our Wings tech program to be able to get those freshmen set. But as it is now, our teachers end up kind of reteaching bits and pieces as needed. So we're just trying to hone in on where's that happening, where are the gaps, and where can we kind of supplement some time to be able to get to our students, to teach them those things.
Because that's a lot on top of what you have to get through course-wise.
Right.
I mean, you're not even talking about what they have to learn. This is before and after.
Right, right. And you don't want to, you know, you might go through it with part of your classes and then by the time you get to seventh hour, you're like, oh, somebody else covered that already. Okay, good. But meanwhile, maybe your morning classes are a little behind your afternoon, you know, it can be a problem. So we're, we're trying to see where we can align some of those things and make sure all students get it.
And at what point do you just say, okay, I can't do it?
The kids are pretty good. And then they also talked about building a Canvas page with some of this information on it and giving it to all students. So if they're stuck, here's where you go. So that might be an option.
Leave it to them, they come up with the answer.
That's why we have them on the committee. They have good ideas.
So last poll, seemed like there was an uptick in the news reports both schools placing greater restrictions on students using their devices in the hallway, you know, certain types of devices in classrooms. I haven't heard nearly as much since the beginning of the school year, so I'm kind of curious. Is there talk or professional writing about those sorts of restrictions and what the, philosophically, where that comes from and how Arrowhead is evaluating those experiences as well?
Right. So we, we really honed in on the phones and keeping those out of the classroom, which has helped our students focus a bit because it is a true addiction with many of them. So I think that's been working fairly well. I, I think at Arrowhead, it's easy to change culture after a year or two because of the movement of the students. So as you're coming in, you know, to South and move to North, you're almost coming to a brand new school. So really two-year changeover and they don't know any difference. I think with our new filtering system, as the filters put things into buckets and categories, we find out where they are and we try to kind of hone in on, okay, this resource really shouldn't have been blocked, let's unblock it. Arrowhead has a pretty open idea about what should be open, as far as I can see, as opposed to other schools. So I think we are not very restricted for our kids and I encourage them to contact me if something is blocked or to tell their teacher and have them contact me. The one, I really haven't run across too many things that we haven't been able to unlock and we rarely block things. It would have to be extreme, but really we haven't, we haven't just blocked something.
Are you saying then the kids are pretty responsible then? That you're not having to shut things down or be careful of things? They're, they're using it wisely?
Really beyond March Madness, we haven't had to do very much. And even during that time, we just encouraged them to hook their computers up to the projector and show it on the projector. So it was one stream, not 200 streams individually. And that kind of, you know, got them excited and they were like, oh yeah, I can hook up to here. So we actually ended up not, not blocking for March Madness. But our bandwidth was, was a little bit higher during that time.
So as far as the phones and the restrictions that are sort of evolving into place and that, how does that work? Who's in charge of enforcement? You know, if a student is in the classroom and has a phone, is that an automatic response in the staff's part in the hallway? How does it work?
It's, it's up to the classroom teacher. If they, if the classroom teacher wants to use it for, for an activity, then they, they certainly have that option. But we really talk to the teachers about, you know, working together on this to make sure that everybody has the same experience. So it's not like one teacher's allowing it and one teacher's not. I think as we really talked about the responsible use policy, we handed it out to teachers and we said, you can just point at this and say, hey, it says right here that you can't. Teachers manage it in all different ways, but I think they, even though there are different ways, they manage it effectively and I haven't heard of very many issues with it.
And kids can, it's for during learning times, it's restricted unless they have the teacher's permission. So passing time between classes, lunchroom, they can still be texting, using their phones. So it's not, you know, all day, that addiction might try them nuts not to be able to check, but it's really restricted to learning times. I would say the beginning of the year where we heard some rumbling about that was study hall. Because kids really, or some kids really felt like, well, study hall, I should be able to do what I want on my phone. But it was very distracting to students around them who really needed to study. And it's awfully hard if you have two or three kids around you checking out, ha ha, laughing about videos on their phone and you want to be studying for a test and now you're distracted. So at first there was grumbling, but I, this I haven't heard since September, anything about study halls and the study hall supervisors report. It's a much nicer climate for study in study hall now without the use of phones.
So the schools that have adopted the no phones all day kind of approach to things, I mean, I have to say, I sure say I have enough teenagers running in and out of my house, but when you use the word addiction, it almost is an understatement.
Right.
And so I, you can tell very curious about whether that problem isn't one that could be better addressed or the lessons of being able to get along without electronics that are conveyed within the school system. I'm just curious if the conversation going on professionally is, you know, offering any insight in respect.
I think setting those parameters, you know, even if it's just dinner, I think kids appreciate it. And as long as you have that kind of reward of, well, after dinner, then you can check your phone, then they, they can deal with that.
I really enjoy getting the weekly email on websites your student has visited.
Oh, do you like that?
I think that's fantastic. Very nice.
I'm glad you like it. I find it interesting as well. Yeah. I think some of the kids just typed in things just, you know, kind of to go, look what I'm typing in. And I go, hey, did you really want to find that? No, okay, good.
Did you know somebody could find out that you were doing that?
Yes.
Yeah, good lesson.
Yeah, it's great, very nice. Well done.
Thanks.
Big Brother is still around.
Okay, was there anything else?
Nope.
All right, we'll run a committee report, curriculum, Sue.
Who wants to travel? Oh my gosh, I think our meetings are all, let's go on a great trip. We all want to go. So the first one is a student trip to France. We didn't have any problem with it at the curriculum committee. We just love to hear about them. You can look at the, you know, I'm sure you looked at the.
Can you get a motion to approve the French trip?
Move to approve it. A second.
Motion, second. Any questions on that? Hearing none. All of your state, aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
And then we go from France to Ecuador, the Galapagos Islands. That one looked awesome also. We're just going to go everywhere. We do marvel every month at the opportunities that these kids are having. Don't we say that like every single time? Because we all think, I don't know, I think they ever did anything like this when I was in high school.
You've got to go to the state capitol.
Yeah. We're going from Tanzania to Italy to Ireland to the Galapagos and Ecuador and Fran-- oh my goodness, this is so cool. So you know how I love curriculum.
To approve the trip to Ecuador and the island.
Second, motion, a second. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all of your state, aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Thank you. And I guess we're not having a meeting in April, so we'll see you all in May.
Perfect. Okay. Finance and legislation, Craig.
Yeah, we had our finance meeting to learn about the state of the preliminary budget. And Steve, as usual, did a great job. In fact, he did so well that we thought we'd have him back again now.
Command performance.
How do you go after Donna?
Go ahead, Steve, please.
All right. Okay. Thank you. I've, you know, school finance doesn't change a whole lot from one year. So my presentation isn't a whole lot. Numbers change, but, but essentially, you know, when we look at the budget on an annual basis, it, it's always kind of a puzzle fitting all the pieces together. We've got, you know, the revenue limit, we've got state utilization aid, we've got per pupil aid, we've got, you know, personnel budget, which obviously we're a people business, we're, this is a, you know, personnel budget is probably close to 70% of the total general fund budget. Buildings and grounds are becoming more of a, a topic for us to really take a look at. Fund balance is becoming a, you know, kind of a hot topic within the budget as we, you know, begin to probably use a little more fund balance through the next few years. And, and also, you know, a big piece of our, you know, the budget is the timeline. And the budget seems to go on forever, you know, budget development, it never ends. We start in December of 2017 and, you know, that's when we start working on things. We're really working on the budget probably in late October from an administrative team basis, setting up allocations, things like that. And because of the way that we, we're fiscal year, we go from July 1st through June 30th, but levies are based on a calendar year. So that's why the budget, we start our fiscal year in July 1st, but we don't certify the levies. the levy until end of October, early November. So, it's kind of an ongoing process. So, we're looking at a preliminary budget approval in action tonight. That'll proceed through more budget adjustments. This year won't be as many as usual, this is second, next year's the second year of the biennial budget. A year from now, we'll probably have a lot more uncertainties, you know, things like that. But then we'll hit the annual meeting and then levy certification. It doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense that the levy gets certified, you know, four months after our fiscal year begins, but it's just how we levy taxes in the state of Wisconsin. So, you know, a big part of our budget is enrollment and as we've talked, you know, our enrollment hit a high of about 2,300, about 2,300 students in 2009, I believe. And we are at a point now where we are looking at a enrollment decline for next year of about 26 students or about 1.2%. And this kind of gives you an idea of what the class sizes will be. The blue is the current year and green is projected for 2018, 19. And again, that's about a 26 student projected drop. And this is had count, this includes open enrollment students, non-resident open enrollment students, as well as, as our resident population. And as we look at budget, you know, future enrollments, we are looking at an enrollment decline over the next six years. And, you know, high school enrollment is not real difficult to project. Obviously, the farther out we get, the least accurate the projections are, but, you know, over the next two or three years, you know, when we look at these enrollment projections, they should be fairly accurate. There's not a ton of residential, new residential growth in our district. So, you know, a lot of it is, you know, existing homes being, you know, kind of flipping over, but that doesn't seem to happen a whole lot in our district. People move here and stay here. So, it's a, you know, it's a great place to live, but, so as far as enrollments, things like that, you know, we're fairly certain we'd love to see this trend reverse, there's no doubt about it. But right now, it looks like, you know, over the next six years, we will be seeing enrollment decline based on the theater school enrollments that we, we know of right now. Revenues, you know, this is kind of pretty much, this doesn't change a whole lot from, from year to year. Local sources, the big, biggest portion of local sources is the property tax. The property tax is our largest source of revenue and state sources are the second-largest source of revenue for Arrowhead. If you look at our state equalization aid, and again, this is, this is state equalization aid. I'll talk about another form of state aid that we're receiving, but essentially, this aid is really based on our equalized value per pupil. And because Arrowhead has a higher equalized value per pupil than the state average, we get into what's called negative tertiary aid and we don't receive as much state aid as a district that has a lower equalized value per pupil. So, essentially, they say the, you know, through this formula that the local property tax, because we have a high tax base, can handle more of the responsibility of funding schools. You know, another aid that is becoming larger as we move is our per pupil aid. And what essentially, it started out in 2012, 13 as $50 per pupil. And essentially, what the state, the state started this per pupil aid plan in order to help reduce property taxes. Rather than put that $50 onto the revenue limit formula, which then would get transferred to the property taxpayer, they started this $50 flat per pupil aid. And that number has grown from $50 per student, which is about $110,000. That number is, next year is projected at $654 per pupil or $1.35 million. So, that's become, that every year is now becoming a more significant part of our state revenue budget. And that, that is per pupil, it's not based on any type of equalized value per member, things like that. And that, the, the way that that money gets distributed in Arrowhead is, is actually more beneficial through the equalization aid formula. So, if they put that same amount of money that they give schools in per pupil aid in the equalization aid formula, Arrowhead would not receive 1.3 million of that. I mean, it, so, so that's something that we hope the state continues to, to do that. And this year, that aid is going up at a clip of $204 per pupil, which really helps our bottom line at the, for 18, 19. We want that to continue to increase, you know, in 19, 20 to help our budget.
Steve, did I hear you say that the, the per pupil aid then is actually a dollar-for-dollar offset what would otherwise be taxed under the revenue cap? Or is that just how it started?
It, 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 kind of. It is, you know, if, if, because the last four years in, starting in 15, 16, the state has not increased the per pupil revenue limit number. Instead, they're giving that money in the form of this increased per pupil aid. So, that aid has gone from $150 per pupil in 15, 16 to 250, in 16, 17, 450, and 17, 18 at $654 in 18, 19.
So, our actual revenue is, is going up?
The revenue's going up. And we're able to spend that money. I mean, that's, so that money, that, that per pupil aid comes in and that increase, we're able to spend that money.
And so, the increases are now lowering and lowering our revenue cap? It's sort of keeping the revenue cap equal while getting additional money?
And helping the, it's helped control property tax increases.
Guess you don't have to take it.
This, this chart represents the various areas of the school budget. Capital expansion, buildings and grounds supplemental, pretty much are, they're, they're both buildings and grounds, projects, budgets. It's not maintenance, it's projects. I mean, we're, you know, HVAC remodeling, you know, IT closets, things like that. The supplemental budget includes departmental, you know, textbooks, our technology purchases, computers, things like that. Special education is our separate fund 27 to fund our special education program. The continued budget is just regular classroom supplies, utilities, transportation, things like that, kind of what items that continue from year to year. And personnel, you can see obviously, personnel is our biggest expenditure item. And what this chart does, it gives you an idea from, from 2010, 11 to 2018, 19, what we've spent on a percentage basis, kind of compares each of these categories. And you can see that in 2010, 11 was a year before Act 10. Personnel budget as a percentage of the whole budget has gone from 74% to 66%. And you can see that we've invested more in buildings and grounds and capital expansion projects. That percent has gone from 1.89% to 6.96% over that, that time period. So, this next chart kind of gives you an idea of our buildings and grounds and capital expansion fund budgets through the years. The red is the capital expansion fund and essentially, capital expansion fund and buildings and grounds supplemental, they're, they're same projects within each fund, but the capital expansion fund money can carry over from year to year. So, and the, the money that's budgeted in those blue columns have to be spent, has to be spent by June 30th of next year. So, usually, we put the roofing and, you know, building envelope expenses because obviously, we, we can't do those projects during the school year. The school has to be out to do building, uh, the roofing projects. And so mainly, a lot of the capital expansion fund budget involves roofing. This, just an explanation, the capital expansion fund budget allows, it is, this levy for this fund is, is acted on at the annual meeting and it does have to fall within the revenue limit, normal limit. So, it is not outside the revenue limit for it. Again, capital expansion projects, roofing, building envelope repairs. Projects included in the general fund, buildings and grounds supplemental budget, North Campus Manufacturing Engineering Remodeling Project. And again, this project is about 700, projected at about $747,000. And we are projecting to use fund balance to fund this project. Kind of funding it in a similar fashion as we funded the South Campus Design Engineering Manufacturing Center project. That project was about $2.1 million. We used a million dollars out of a state trust fund loan and then about $1.1 million on fund balance to fund that. So, that is what we're projecting there. Cooling and standby power to the North Campus IT network room, it's important to keep the equipment in that room cool and, and working if there is a power outage. And then additional bit, roofing and building repairs within this budget. And then the Northwest gym floor replacement. That again, we had some money budgeted in the current budget. We're going to use about $100,000 in fund balance to fund a portion of that gym floor replacement, we'll carry that over from this year. So, next budget, this kind of gives you a breakdown of that. You saw that 66% personnel budget in the previous graph. This kind of breaks it down further between, you know, teachers, administrators, support staff, substitutes, extracurricular and retirement. This, and this is kind of hard to see, but you can look on your, your document, some of the health insurance, dental insurance, long-term disability insurance, the changes that have occurred in those employee benefit programs over the last eight years. It involves, you know, health insurance carrier changes. We are looking at our, another carrier change effective July 1st. If you look at down at the bottom, I don't have a dollar figure in there because we, we don't know exactly because of the fact we're lowering our deductible potentially with a carrier change, that'll be acted on later on in the meeting. And then having the employees get reimbursed for the increased deductible through an HRA, we're not sure what that savings would be, but potentially, that deductible exposure in one year is about $294,000. And in the first year that we make the switch, the deductible exposure is going to be a little higher. But in, in the second year in 1920, that deductible exposure could be potentially 25 to 50% of that $294,000 that potentially will be able to save the district some money down the line. Essentially, we're looking at self-funding a portion of our health insurance plan. It's not self-funded, but by doing it the way that is being proposed, you're looking at self-funding about 10% of the, the health insurance plan. So, the next document is, this is the, represents the increases and decreases in the different budget categories in general. The big increase obviously for next year is in personnel and that's our biggest portion of our budget. That really represents increases in salary and, and benefit revisions. We're looking at probably about a one and a half percent increase in salaries and, you know, the personnel increase in teacher salaries and also with the support staff salaries and administrative confidential support, things of that nature. And our OPEP liabilities, the post-employment benefit liabilities continue to decrease and go down and that's factored in that budget as well. And then some various teacher reductions and, and changes in teacher salary. So, continuing budget, a lot of that is associated with open enrollment expenditures going down. Again, we're projecting our open enrollment student numbers out, out of district to go down a little bit, that helps reduce expenses. Special ed budget, that is really, those increases are associated with salary benefit revisions, tuition payments to other districts, transportation such as that, those items. Supplemental budget, that's going down. Decreases in the technology budget are associated with that. Some of the tech ed expenses that we had incurred this year for equipment are going down. And then the buildings and grounds and capital expansion budget is projected to go up. But again, we're using, projecting to use $847,000 in fund balance for that. The district fund balance, oh no, I got one more, district tax levy. Again, the levy is projected to increase 0.03% for next year. And in this chart, the levy since 2011, 12, that total levy has gone up 7.1% over those seven years. And if we, if we added one more column left, if we put in 10, 11, that levy was actually higher than 2011, 12. Fund balance, again, this is becoming, you know, a, a tool for us to use as we, you know, need to take care of some of the buildings and grounds projects that are out on, you know, as, as we, we look at, we haven't had a referendum approved since 1999. So, some of this fund balance, you know, we're looking at about $8.3, $4 million projected at the end of the year. And that's about 32% of next year's general fund budget. It's, we're in good shape, the fund balance is in good shape. There's not an issue if, if some of that is used for one-time projects. You don't want to use the fund balance for ongoing or any expenses because eventually it runs out and then you're going to have to expense anyways. We still have to borrow on a cash flow basis because the majority of our revenue doesn't come until January, we still have to borrow on a short-term borrow-out basis to meet expenses towards the end of Jan, uh, December each year. And we do have a debt service fund balance of about $67,000, but $56,000 of that is dedicated towards a September interest payment. And from a debt service standpoint, our debt from that 1999 referendum will term in March of 2020. So, then that will be the end of that 20-year debt payment, which is approximately $1.7 million in here in principal and interest. From a, I'm sorry, this is the tax levy. The tax levy chart shown here is a projected 0.03% increase from the previous year. 10, 11 was our high levy at 19.65 million and levy projected for next year is about And again, this number's going to change when we get to, you know, after October levy certification, there will be adjustments to this. The next chart kind of gives you, this is a, and I, this is comparing our, our tax levy through the years to our state equalization aid. And there is some, because these are the two largest sources of revenue, there is a correlation between our, over the, you know, the years, the equalization aid has decreased by $121,000 and the levy since 11, 12 has increased by $221,000. Not an exact correlation, but there is a correlation between equalized va, equalized state aid going down and the levy going down. This chart just gives you kind of an, an idea of where we're levying money. We're levying money in the general fund, the long-term debt service fund, the non-referendum debt service, that represents principal and interest payment on the state trust fund loan for the DEM. the D E M C project and the capital expansion fund. We have other funds in our budget, but we do not levy funds in Funds 21, which is our special projects, it's really a lot of our fundraising is in there. Fund 27, there's not a fund levy for, Fund 27 does not levy a fund. Fund 46 is our capital improvement fund, there's no fund levied in there. Food service, no levy. School activity funds, we do not levy. We have a scholarship account, we have a, our other post-employment benefits account, there's no levy in that fund and the ICE Center and other projects as well. So this just gives you an idea where those funds are being levied. Mill rate is the next chart and we are projecting the mill rate to go down by 0.96%. Now this is a kind of a function of the tax levy and the equalized value. And so essentially the, the mill rate equals the tax levy divided by the equalized value times 1,000. And because the levy is going up by 0.03%, the
Repeat that.
Equalized value is projected to go up by 1%. You get a, a mill rate decrease of 0.96%. So the equalized value in 2017 went up by 3.93%. So the 1% is probably a conservative estimate, but that will not be certified until October. The next chart, and again, this chart kind of, we try to adjust and get it, give you an idea of what, you know, we kind of took a house in 2009, valued at $260,000 and then adjusted its value over the years. And, and again, this, this may not be accurate, we, you know, there have been some, you know, the recession was during this time, there was a period of time when equalized values went down for a number of years, now they're kind of back on the uptick. So this kind of gives you an idea of, of a home valued at $265,000 in 2019, what they would, that home would potentially pay in Arrowhead property taxes, which is about $852. Now, Arrowhead's portion, the total property tax bill might represent 20 to 25% of the bill. There's the feeder school, county, WCTC municipality, so there's other levies that are, other than Arrowhead that show up on your property. And, and this chart, this chart has not been updated for a couple of years, but it kind of gives you an idea, and it, because we're a Union High School District, there's really only 10 schools like us in the state. This gives you an idea of the comparative total education cost per member. And Arrowhead is historically down in the lower half as far as the comparative total education cost per member. And this, this should be updated for 1617. I suspect possibly this will go, will go down another slot possibly. But essentially, you know, if you look at some of the Union High School Districts, you know, the cost per member is ranged from $11,482 to well, to over $20,000. So we're, we're at $12,768. And so we're not, we're generally on the lower end of this, this scale. And then when you look at the, this is the Union High School mill rates for 1718, this is, this is a pretty current chart. Arrowhead has the second lowest mill rate of all 10 Union High School Districts in the state. So that's good. And that's pretty much it. You know, the, obviously we talked before, this budget is not done, this is a preliminary budget. By passing this budget, it, it allows us to get going on some of those buildings and grounds projects. It allows us to, you know, work towards settling, you know, getting employee pay set at the, at the May 4 meeting and there's, there's more to come, obviously. We have the annual meeting, if there's any major adjustments, we'll, we'll probably bring the budget back to you in July for what we present to the annual meeting electorate. And then obviously there's, you know, one leg of our revenue limit stool is the September of 2018 enrollment number, we're projecting that, that'll be known through Friday in September. And the state aid, we will not know, the equalization aid, we will not know until October 15th. And our equalized values, we will not know until probably second week of October. So more to come, but this gets us, this is the best move forward with the budget for 2018, 19.
Thanks Steve.
Thanks.
Everybody have any questions for Stephen before we proceed with them?
Yes.
All right. Can I have a motion and a second to move the budget, preliminary budget forward?
No move.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any other questions? Hearing not all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
One more thing, yeah, one more thing that we had, it's noted at the bottom of your report there or the letter, that we did have a conversation or a discussion in committee about teacher salary schedule and how that was to be handled, whether it ought to be modified or adjusted in any way. And it was the consensus of the committee to leave things alone and not to pursue that any further at this time.
So as before, how am I, take issue with the word consensus, how about majority?
Majority. I'll go with majority.
All right, moving on, building and grounds. We had a meeting this morning, Al was not present, so I'll just report out a couple of things that we had discussion on. Some of it was already, it's already been covered by Steve's presentation on the building and grounds supplemental capital expansion budget, talked about the roof projects that there's one at South Campus, one at North Campus. Talked about the, the, at the North Campus metals shop area renovation there to the, to add a classroom to that space as well as update some of the HVAC systems there to make that more, more operational, better operational area. Miscellaneous things along with the buildings, Steve talked about the West Gym Replacement. What we're doing now is a temporary patch of certain areas on the floor to get us through the next school year. And then a year from now, basically December of 2014, the floor will be completely removed because it's got murking behavior and so, but patching for certain areas to get through the, because we don't have time now to do it. That's why it's kind of split away, Steve presented it, so. Okay. The other thing, the next thing we talked about, we had a soccer team room update, if you recall from past discussions, there's been a, a project kind of in the works, they're doing some fundraising to add a team room between the two dugouts at the soccer stadium and the east side of the soccer stadium. Most of the product, as far as the material for the building would be donated by Span Creed, but there's other, obviously costs with site work and electricity and that kind of stuff. So they're, they're hoping to be able to get the balance of the funding. It's about a $75,000 project, they're hoping to get the balance of the funding by May and we can give them the go-ahead and may proceed to get that thing up and running. The other thing we talked about, there was a request that we look at the possibility of doing a threat assessment study on our, on our facilities. I did reach out to Dr. Tyer, who's in that type of business, and he gave us some valuable information that I shared with the, with the committee. Steve had also found out some information from our, our insurance carrier that they could do a, basically a, a basic assessment. And I know that Laura had met with the area superintendents this morning as well, that the sheriff's department is doing some training of their staff to be able to do some level of threat assessment to, to facilities as well. So our discussions, we'll see how that goes. We'll have the insurance company, we're suggesting, we just have the insurance company kind of come and do their basic assessment. And if we want to move on to have a group like Dr. Tyer do it, we may look for the, the state funding that is coming through the Safe Schools Grants that are, can come through the Department of Justice to see if that's an eligible thing besides some other things that we had in the building and grounds budget that haven't been moved up yet, but that deal with the cameras and door strikes and classroom locks and stuff like that, that'll all be part of a grant application process. So, so that's where that kind of stands right now. So, okay, everybody has any questions on that? All right, moving on. Under personnel, we had a meeting on March 23rd and we have some action items and I'll just have Steve kind of give a highlight of the different things as we kind of walk through them. So the first one we'll talk about is the 2018, 2019 Employee Handbook. This is something that we have to update every year, that's our goal, kind of have it reviewed in April and approved in April so that the staff knows going into the next school year what any potential changes are into that. So if you want to just, it's a work in progress every year, but Steve can maybe just hit some bullet points on it.
Yeah, the, um, there's, there are a few, and I don't think, I mean, we went through pretty much every change, there's probably 35 revisions. Some of them are typos, some of them are just updates as per the Fair Labor Standards Act. Not a ton of, you know, language changes that are really, really significant. If you look in the handbook right now, in there, we still have the old salary schedules for 1718, those will be updated once those are set by the school board. There's, there's some forms in there that need to be updated for 1819. Those will all, anything that, you know, has a form dated 1718 or will be updated to 1819. And again, as Bob had said, when you look at the employee handbook, it's kind of a perpetuating document that we need to update on an annual basis. And, and, you know, as far as the review of the handbook, it's done by members in our business office, we review it at the administrative team level, we brought it to the Personnel Committee and went through it fairly thoroughly on March 23rd. And if there are any questions on any of that, and the changes are all in there, are reflected through highlighting, if it's, you know, if you look through there, the changes are highlighted, so.
We also review it, we have our legal counsel, our Bob Butler
Yes, yep.
Review it as well.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on the handbook? Do I entertain a motion to approve that?
No move. Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the 2018, 2019 Employee Handbook. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Next one is on the United Healthcare Health Insurance Plan, which includes, as Steve explained, the health insurance plan.
This is too little.
Yeah, and we've, the, Arrowhead's a member of the Waukesha County Health Insurance Cooperative and we bid on our health insurance plan this year. And our current carriers, carrier is WEA Insurance and WEA proposed a 24.8% increase in the premium, which is obviously significant and from a budget standpoint was not, not really an option that we could consider. So immediately the Cooperative pretty much eliminated WEA from contention. And, and we did an interview Anthem Insurance and we also interviewed United Healthcare. And United Healthcare, I wouldn't say it was a unanimous choice, but it was, the Cooperative voted on moving to United Healthcare. And our current plan is a 500, 2,000, or 500 single thousand-dollar family deductible. And United Healthcare with the performance plan provided a very attractive offer to Arrowhead. And not all schools have the same plan design, so we're all a little different. But the offer to Arrowhead for that $1,500, $3,000 deductible represented about a 7% decrease in the, in the district's premium. And essentially that more than covered the, the increase in the deductible exposure. So, and we are also, the next vote would consider establishing a health reimbursement arrangement, which we have never had at Arrowhead, that essentially will reimburse the employees' deductible expense pretty much to the same level as our deductible was with WEA. And, and potentially, in the first year, there's a, there's kind of a double exposure to the deductible because the, you've got June, July 1st through December 31st, they could have the, the higher, you know, the higher deductible and then they, then that new deductible start, year starts on January 1st and they could entail, I mean, they could incur their total deductible for the 2019 school year. Chances are it's not going to happen, but they could incur it in, in this fiscal year, even though they, you know, that covers the whole 2019 calendar year. But, so our, our deductible exposure through that HRA is, will be a little higher in the first year, but potentially in years after that, in talking with diversified benefit services, the deductible usually about 25 to 50% of the deductible is used by employees on an annual basis. So that potentially could be a savings in the 19, 2019, 2020 school year. So with that, you know, we, we discussed at the Personnel Committee meeting, the performance United Healthcare Health Insurance Plan. This, we, we moved from United Healthcare to WEA back in July of 2016. And this is the same network that we had, Choice Plus Network through United Healthcare that we had back prior to 2016. So it's not the same plan, not the same intact plan design, this performance plan design is kind of steering employees to use their primary care physician rather than to go to a specialist. So the, the co-pay associated with, with going to your primary care physician is $15 for an office visit, if you go to a specialist, it's $60. So, because they, they feel that, you know, a lot of, a lot of health issues probably can get taken care of at a lower cost primary health care, healthcare, primary physician rather than going to a specialist. So that's all part of this plan as well.
So did the network, the network changed from two years ago to last year, or now it's going back to where it was two years ago, Steve?
Correct, yeah. The network is, I mean, it might be, I mean, it probably includes 99, 98, 98% of the doctors in Milwaukee area. It may have changed a little bit, but that's, it's essentially the same network, maybe a doctor dropped out and one was added, you know, stuff like that.
So most teachers didn't, or most staffers didn't get upgraded from their primary physician relationship?
No, there's not, there won't be much disruption to this.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the changing of the health insurance carrier.
Move. Second.
Motion, a second. Any other questions on that? Hearing not all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Next one, Steve pretty much hit on it, the information is there. If there was any questions on the, on establishing that HRE plan that Steve described.
Steve, you've indicated in the committee, but I just wanted to make sure that this is, these are not accounts that take and carry over year to year to year, it's just a benefit that is out there to help reimburse expenses and what gets spent in a year is our expense and what's not spent is a savings.
Correct.
And there's nothing that, going on a go-forward basis that would change this as it's structured now into accumulating fund of individual accounts for That would take more action if you wanted to That would take more action if you wanted to move to something like that.
Okay.
Staff had asked for that last year.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the establishment of the health reimbursement arrangement that Steve described.
So move.
Motion is second. Any other questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained.
How many abstains?
Two.
Two abstains, okay. Motion carries. Okay, the only other thing to report is on the 28th of March, the Personnel Committee, probably the first time in anybody's recollection, had to deal with an athletic code violation appeal. And just to make it real short, student was involved in some activity that was against the athletic code violation, was it athletic code violation? It was appealed through the normal processes that we have in place, up to including a panel that was established. And the next and last step is to appeal that to the Personnel Committee, or Personnel Committee is the final, basically the final say in it. And so we dealt with that issue, so, okay. Moving on, policy. Donna, we've got a half a page here.
It looks worse than what it really is. Laura did a wonderful job of trying to describe what all of this is all about, and most of it has to do with the open enrollment, and also the changes to the course options. A lot of it, some of it is just rewarding as well, so about three of those are not too serious. One thing that we did talk about is on, which one was that? The early college, the 390 technical college course. We pretty much agreed to all of these, except the technical college course had a grade point of 2.5, and we're mixing that whole thing. Does anybody have any questions on all of these? Or any of these? Do you want to add anything?
In a nutshell, it's almost all related to law changes. So according to the law, course options and youth options programs are out, and in place of that is part-time open enrollment, early college credit program, technical college course program. So slightly different programs with new names across the state.
And service animals, we've had them here before, but we never had a policy and a procedure so this describes it quite a bit. It's not therapy animals, it's service animals, and there's procedures on that that go along with it. And the staff physical examinations now, instead of having to be tested, they just have to be...
Yeah, again, state law change.
Yeah.
So it used to be a tuberculosis test was required, and now the law says a tuberculosis screening is required. So it's just a wording change in our policy to accommodate the law.
So Bob?
Okay, here we go.
Okay.
A, discussion, motion to approve the changes to, add policy 328.
So move.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions?
Just a moment. No, not on that one.
Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one is a, action to approve the deletion of policy 623.1 course options.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any question on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C, discussion, action to approve revision to policy 623 correspondence courses.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any question on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion, action to approve revised policy procedure for 623 open enrollment.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any question on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B, discussion, action to approve revised title for subsection 390.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any question on that one?
I'm going to jump in here. Laura, when we had this at committee, I believe it was the technical college, but I just want to get in here in case it was partially addressed here. There was reference to compliance with IEPs in order to qualify for these programs, and we talked about making some slight modifications.
Right. I added a sentence that explains the wording related to IEPs, and I can't...
That's in the technical one?
I was trying to remember.
I think it probably was technical college, but I didn't want to approve it here unless we just made sure that that change had been reviewed.
The, the law is, we're writing these new policies. We use the statute, but more helpful is the WASB policy documents, and they provide, sometimes it's samples, and sometimes it's wording for us. And according to the statute, and I'm not...
I thought it was in the next one.
This one doesn't have any language to it other than the header. It says do enrollment early college credit, I don't think so. For that, for the one we're talking about right now.
Well, the, oh, I know it was in...
It was in H.
I believe the procedure's been deleted.
Well, anyway, the wording of the, the law says that a student can be denied for numerous reasons, and one of the reasons is they can be denied the enrollment at the technical college or, you know, different institution if that course was contradictory to their IEP. So we've used the exact language recommended by the WASB. And Tim brought up that could lead to people thinking an IEP is really restrictive, and that's not the point of an IEP. An IEP is really supposed to be what's best for the student. So we added a sentence that clarified that an IEP can be, and actually, I'm looking at Adam, because I...
I'm trying to find what my...
Yeah, I cast the wording through him too, that the IEP...
Is that better?
May.
No. No. That the IEP per law can be changed through an IEP meeting with parent involvement. So it helps, I mean, that's already law. The wording that we used in the document is also law, but we wanted to help folks that would read this to clarify that if the course was denied because it was in conflict with the IEP, the parent or the staff member can certainly call another IEP meeting to reevaluate that student's IEP, should the IEP change, or has something changed in the student's performance, where the programming should be changed in the IEP, which would allow for a certain course.
Yeah, essentially taking it from maybe looking like we're saying that you can't go somewhere because you have an IEP, just stating that this option might conflict with what is written in your IEP in terms of services, so we'd have to call a meeting and make changes to that, determining what is in the best interest of the students.
Oh, it's, the reason we're not finding it is it's up in the part-time open enrollment. All right.
Number two on page one.
So the district shall deny a student's application to attend a course at another public high school under part-time open enrollment if, and there's the several things listed, five things listed, and one of them is the course conflicts with the student's individualized education program or IEP. Under the Individuals with Disabilities Act, which is IDEA, an IEP meeting can be held at the discretion of the parents or school personnel to review and alter a student's IEP. So the first sentence is part of the recommended language. The second sentence is our clarifier to make it more clear that IEPs are not meant to be restrictive.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, a second, and E.
I'm E, yes.
Yeah, okay, so we have a motion, a second, just to change the title of 390, subsection 390. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under F, discussion, action to approve the deletion of policy procedure 390 youth options program.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under G, it's discussion, action to approve new policy procedure 390 early college credit program.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Action carries. Under H...
Bob, twenty one.
Yes.
With these new policies, since we'll have a full board, we have to have a second reading.
Why don't we, why don't we just continue with it? We do, we correct it. Right, we correct it. Okay, under H, discussion, action to approve new policy procedure 390.2 technical college course program, start college now.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under I, it's discussion, action to approve new policy procedure 364 service animals on the school premises.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then under J, it's discussion, action to approve revised policy 711.2 staff physical examinations.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any question on that? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So generally, in the next month or two, we always go through the entire policy to policy handbook to revise it. Any other ayes besides the policy committee would be nice, if you really want to look at all of those and see if it needs any change.
It's a great sleep aid. Sorry.
I mean, after all the excitement.
Right, right. I mean, well, no.
Yeah, and then the Assembly just passed all sorts of new acts, so I'm sure that there's going to be something else on that too soon. Do we normally do that in May? Is the handbook in May or June?
We've also done it in June.
Okay, maybe June, and that way we can get some of these other acts going on, and WASB sends out some forms on that.
Okay, other reports? I'm all done, if you have anything to report on the WASB.
I do not.
Okay, I'm assuming that the A meeting, that's what they're looking for, delegates for the Assembly. Same thing with CISA, the A meeting, delegate down. Under new business, we have employee transactions, we have some retirements, two retirements. Listen in your board packet. Motion to approve those.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second.
How many years has Jan been?
I was asking Diane, she's 13 or 14.
She was in the band's office for a number of years before she came into the, so it's heading 14, 15, I'd say.
I even asked her, I think she said 15 or 17.
So we have a motion, a second, to approve those. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then we have one contract to approve, see your packet.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve that. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the last one is the action to issue a preliminary staff contract non-renewal notice, which is included in your packet.
Are we still in the right time? Oh, I'm sorry.
So move that we approve the non-renewal statement.
And a second. And are we still in that time period? We can do that? So, okay.
Yeah, it's going to have to come back for final non-renewal.
Okay.
Too, so...
I thought it had expired already.
Yeah, that, under the old laws, it used to be...
Now I think preliminary notice.
By April 15th, now it's June 15th.
Got it.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, on that. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no donations this time. And then the next is selection of school board members to participate in the Arrowhead High School commencement ceremony on June 2nd or 3rd, depending on the weather. As a reminder, all board members are welcome, but only four can be up on the stage. Daniel Dave, for sure.
I'd love to be up.
Because he's got a graduate, so.
I'd like to.
Tim, Amy.
I always love to.
Okay, so we're good with that? We've got four. So those four will be on the stage. Anybody else is welcome, absolutely welcome to attend as well, so. Okay.
Bring a Kleenex box, Sue. Or get on the other side of the stage.
I'll stand with you, and we'll both grab it.
Do you have a motion on that, Bob?
I'm sorry, yeah, motion to approve the four that were listed.
So move.
Second.
Yeah, second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just a couple, not agenda items, but a couple notes. On April 28th, the Arrowhead Athletic Hall of Fame will be inducting seven new members to the ceremony at Seven Seas. There's information on the website, if you'd like to attend, it's a pretty outstanding event. We've got seven great people we're putting in this here. Diane had sent out the Arrowhead Award nomination thing, March or May 15th is the date, so if you want to nominate somebody, or if that's worthy for the Arrowhead Award, please do that, send in information to Laura, and then we'll, the committee that selects that will be the, May 18th, to select it, plus the teachers of the year at that point as well. And then everybody had an opportunity to sign that certificate, present that. If you're interested, I don't know all the details, but on May 5th, at Ironwood, there's going to be an event in regards to that certificate, and you're, I'm not sure what the details are, but the idea, the general idea is that it's going to be a fundraiser, soldiers, scholarship money for kids that play youth football, so that's...
And other sports. It'll go into the Chuck Delsman, Chuck Delsman Community Fund Award, which will help anybody in need in any type of activity, sports activity or non-sports. Somebody needs help with their heating bill or electric bill, or they can apply for grant money from that.
Yeah, okay. So Dave, have they... Right, motion to adjourn.
I have one quick thing, two, one thing. I didn't, never knew about this, but I got intercepted that the Arrowhead High School instrumental music program has a spring plant sale, so anybody who wants to make their yard look beautiful, I printed off a couple of flyers, smart. I think you have to label the student, and they get points put into their account, or something.
And they are trying to raise money for a nice trip.
Right, now, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your turn, thank you, everybody, great meeting.